All right, call the meeting of the fire commission to order at seven o'clock, we'll start with the pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the two republics, we stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comment tonight?
No.
Doug Tom, no public comment?
No comment, no sir.
So any correspondence?
There is not.
There's not, excellent. All right, we'll move into the election of officers, the annual elections, we need to elect a chair, vice chair, and secretary, so start with the election of a chair.
I would like to make a motion that instead of a chair and a vice chair, we have a co-chair, and I would nominate past chief Ingram and past chief Rubino to fill those positions.
Is there a second?
I don't know if you can do it.
Yeah, and I don't think it's, it's not the, the regulation though, the, it's, the ordinance set up is that. It's a ordinance was created by ordinance, the senate was, the ordinance said it'd be a chairman, vice chairman, vice secretary.
But you know, Chief, sure, I, yeah.
I hope you only know once we've been. Very good, but it's already one of.
You guys wanna put, I'm gonna wanna fight it out.
Yeah, I'm not fighting.
I don't wanna fight.
So I, I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion that we nominate.
We have to amend the motion.
Oh, yeah.
Then I'll amend my motion.
Okay.
I actually can withdraw.
The motion never got a second. Never got a second. All right, what was, what was the motion?
He withdrew.
So my new motion is, I'd like to nominate past chief Ingram as the chair.
Second, yeah, I second that.
And past chief Rubino as the assistant chair.
Vice chair.
Their vice chair.
All right, so there's a motion to nominate myself as the chair and Tony Rubino as the vice chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we need a motion for secretary?
I'll make a motion that we have the curfew as secretary.
Motion to hold over Doug Coney as the secretary, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Excuse me, who was the second on the motions?
All right.
Rich made motion.
I made the motion.
Oh, I said.
Tony seconded. All right, consideration of approval of the regular meeting minutes from September thirteenth.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second it as the only other commission member that was in attendance, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstained? So it's two in favor and two abstentions, I believe that makes the motion carry. All right, uh. And I wanted, I wanted to have special meetings for the respective departments for them to present their budgets, I wanted a special meeting for each department, I thought it was kinda chaotic last night, we had both departments presenting on the same night, we were trying to vote everybody's budget, and so I thought if we had a separate night for each department, so I want to consider the approval of a regular, uh, or a special meeting date for the Stony Hill Fire Department budget presentation to the commission. Anybody have?
You got a date?
I do not have a date, I was, I wanted to consult with Mr. Baker, I know he works evenings, so.
Uh, no, actually I work days now, so.
All right, is there, is there a Wednesday evening, uh?
Yeah, Wednesday evening should work.
Next Wednesday?
Sure.
I would make one comment.
Good.
I'll find out when we appear before the.
Yeah.
For finding.
Yeah, well, I wanna get it in, I wanna get it in relative, you know, within the week.
Sure.
We haven't started scheduling the budget meetings for the departments, right now we're doing the, uh, department heads with Dan and the controller, um, so it'll be after that, we have dates for it. But I don't know where.
Yeah, I mean, if we get a special meeting day for each department, it'll be like the next ten days.
Off the February.
Beginning of that year, yeah.
Yeah, but we could, we could put these departments also.
Yes.
We have to, that way we can review it first.
Next Tuesday work for you, chief?
Yes.
Rest of the commission next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, we have a select.
We do.
Yeah, Tuesday doesn't work, Thursday?
Thursday's Sunday night. Monday night.
I'm gonna look at my phone just to look at a calendar.
Monday's Martin Luther King Day.
Martin's, yeah. So Wednesday was out, uh, Tuesday was out, was, what was thir- Thursday is, yes, no?
Eighteenth. Okay with me? That's five, you're very fifteen, eighteen. Yeah, that's fine, man.
All right, motion to set a special meeting date to consider Stony Hill's budget presentation to the commission, commission on Thursday, the eighteenth.
Hi.
Seven P M.
Meeting room A.
Meeting room A. Second.
I second that motion to make it January.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next.
Yeah, well, that was kind of the point, yeah. Um, so consideration of a special meeting day for Bethel Fire Department to present its budget to the commission. Something in the following week?
Following Tuesday will work for me if it works for you, gentlemen.
Tuesday, the twenty second?
Twenty third.
I'm sorry, yeah, twenty third.
Twenty third.
Tuesday, hard work for everybody?
Uh, that's not for me, I plan to use some.
Wednesday, the twenty fourth?
Wednesday will work for me.
All right, a motion to hold a special meeting for the Bethel Fire Department to present its budget to the commission on Wednesday, the twenty fourth, seven P M, meeting room A. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, chief's reports.
Excuse me, you missed the meeting schedule for twenty twenty four?
Yeah, I missed the meeting schedule for twenty twenty four, I'm sorry about that, consideration of approval for the regular meeting schedule of twenty twenty four would be, it's the second Wednesday of every month. I believe everybody was emailed a copy of it.
Make a motion, we, they, they accept this meeting schedule as printed, that'd be one.
Seconding by Rich? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. It was on the agenda for the last meeting, but it's canceled, it's canceled. All right, so we'll change it up because Chief McCollum always complains he has to go first, we'll go to chief, chief's reports, chief Baker, you're up.
Um, outstanding projects, I still have not had the, uh, electric company come in to do the wiring for the cameras that, uh, I've been sitting in the firehouse for months. Uh, it involved a shock electric, it's going to be contacted, date scheduled, um, if the scissor lift from the school system, so, um, hope it's being in the process of being coordinated. Um, during the process of the phone system being installed, they noticed that both of the nine one one call boxes on the outside of the building are not working, they can hear the caller, but the caller cannot hear dispatch. So both of those boxes have to be replaced, they're not that old, I'm surprised, but they both have to be replaced, um, because we've changed to digital versus the analog phones, now that we're on the, uh, fiber optic network, the phone system, uh, there's an adapter that's being used to go back to the analog phone system, that won't be needed, but they said they could use it on Bethel's system. So I got a quote, I guess one of theirs has to be replaced, but both of mine need to be replaced, the quote that we got was fifteen hundred, or the whole project to get them working in both stations, I don't know how that's gonna work, to split the cost. Um, and I don't know where the, the money's gonna come from because it wasn't expected in my budget. Uh, also while doing the phone upgrade, the, we have a speaker in the engine base that's not working any longer, they say the speaker is blown, so you cannot hear what calls are being, uh, dispatched in the, in the base, it's either too loud and distorted, or you don't hear it at all. Um, they said the new phone system does not work without an amplifier, and that would have to be purchased plus a new speaker, so there, that's another, uh, twenty two hundred dollars that we have to come up with. So I have quotes for both of those, it's just a matter of discovering where the money would come from. Other than that, we had the, um, I'm sure, um, Tom is gonna speak to it about this as well, but, uh, both the fire trucks from Soyo and, um, the engine from, uh, Bethel went up to, uh, Windsor to have the tanks emptied and flushed of the, uh, phone system. Um, they are now empty, they cannot be used, but they are now empty, so there cannot be any, um, release of any phone. Um, we are in the process of purchasing a message board system to help with, um, morale, uh, retention, training. So that's a, a positive, we're also looking into some, uh, new software that's gonna help the, uh, the fire marshal's office and also kind of streamline some things, some alerting systems that we use. And that's about it, that's, that's where we stand right now.
Were you thinking of putting that in your budget for this year, the, the message board and stuff?
Uh, that was actually submitted already in last year, in the current year's budget, but I couldn't wait until the, this one gets approved in, in June, because they were offering some break years, uh, like one message board for, for free, uh, for the lifetime that we have it.
So you have that in this year's budget?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, motion to accept.
Okay, do, do you have those invoices for the, uh, speaker?
Uh, I did not print them, I can get them to you.
Well, wait, do you wanna?
I figure I would have to try and get it out of this year's operating.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, twenty two hundred dollars, you got that in your vehicle maintenance or are your fire?
Firehouse maintenance?
I'd have to see, we've also had, uh, the dishwasher repaired, we've had some additional repairs, so I'm trying to watch it closely to see if I'm gonna go over budget.
I mean, personally, I'd rather see it take it out of your budget, if you run out of money at the end of the year, come back to it with them.
And if I may, I'd make a recommendation that we approve the fifteen hundred dollars to send it on to, uh, the board of selectmen, and I would be in favor to make a motion on board of selectmen that would take it out of our budget, because it's, it's used for the whole.
I mean, I kinda told, uh, I T department, who was, who's kind of being the, uh, go between, that it's, it's a nine one one contact point, I can't say no, we're not gonna fix it.
Right, that's right, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
I can, for the twenty two hundred dollar, uh, invoice for actually fixing the alerting and paging system, that's, that's a little different.
What can you add to that, then, if you wanna do it like that, that adds fixing the speakers correctly and the engine bay?
Well, he, he thought maybe he's gonna look in his budget, see if there's any money in his budget for the speaker system, but I feel the, the nine one one, uh, call boxes are really important, they should get done right away.
Hey, are you, there's a problem with yours at your firehouse, chief?
No, we had a problem, we did replace her.
I, I thought I noticed that you had already.
Brew neck and we replaced.
So you're all set with your outside call boxes?
Okay, because in the quote, it said that there was a repair that needed, you had done it.
I thought they already got a new one to take care of.
I, I didn't want to interrupt you.
So was that extra in the fifteen hundred dollars for your two?
Well, yeah, the, I have to assume so because the, uh, quote has the price, and then the breakdown of the price included, um, a repair that needs to be done in Bethel.
Which, which, the repair in Bethel was a whole new box, correct?
It was a brand, brand, as you saw.
I saw it.
It's a brand new box. Yeah, a plastic box.
It's on me next week.
So I, I, if there's something else that he's wiring that, he had to run for it and.
When he, you wanna just. For our suite?
For next week. Okay, but I'll, I'll talk to Nick tomorrow about that and say, is there something else additionally needs to be done, because the phone works, so, you know, excuse me if it doesn't work.
You're good with that, then?
Yes, get a filter next week and.
So motion to accept, chief Baker's, uh, chief's report?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Go carry. All right, chief McCollums, chief's report.
Okay, so you just heard about the phone, that was done, uh, this, this sun network, C E N number, network is now fully operational at Bethel Fire, fully operational, so we have a call. Which is good, that's a very good thing. Um, the cameras outside are all operational now, uh, we're just looking to see if we may need one more, there may be one little blind spot where we have to, I have to get one more camera, but the four that we got are all installed, they're all working. Um, we already have the, you know, we have the, the message boards around the firehouses, as you've seen, we have those. The squad went out and got repaired from its little issue, uh, in the bay there with the, uh, ladder getting caught on the pillar. And that's back, it's in operation, um, all the paperwork was filed with Phyllis, and she's following up on it. So, you know, we'll go from there with that. Uh, Greenwood Avenue Fire.
We're gonna try to do a insurance claim on that?
We have, yes, sir, yeah. Uh, we have, uh, we're gonna have to file a claim for two oh eight Greenwood for two lengths of five inch hose. We did the research to try and get it, uh, covered on, under warranty, unfortunately, the company that supplied that hose, which was during your term, chief, um, is no longer in existence, it's been bought and sold like three times. So, you know, conveniently for them, you know, all records lost, this and that, we can't, you know, so we're gonna have to buy it. Five inch hose is, right now, it's a little over eleven hundred dollars a length, I'm gonna get that paperwork to Phyllis for two lengths, hundred foot, five inch hose, um, key hose, which is what we use, so it all matches, and, uh, you know, she'll work that through the town's insurance to claim that on the, uh, property owner over there on Greenwood Avenue. Hopefully we'll have a good result there and get the, uh, the money.
Yeah, what will happen?
What happened to it is, is the inner jacket actually separated from the outer jacket.
Okay, so it was a failure of the hose.
Failure of the hose at, literally at the fire, so, you know, we had, uh, there's like five or six lengths out, two lengths failed, it's all the same age, so, you know, I'm kind of worried now with the rest of it, because I, you know, you don't know what's gonna happen. You don't know, was just those two eyeball lengths or, you know, we're, so we're watching it.
Did that cause a problem, did it restrict waters?
Uh. It, it didn't, luckily we were okay, we were okay, um, and of course Greenwood Avenue, you have great, you have great water there, I mean, we had eighty, eighty pounds of the panel going into the trucks. Yeah, it's fantastic, we have plenty of water. That worked out.
But the operator said, what did, what was the, the indication someone wrong?
It was found after, when we, when we broke down the hose, you could, you can see it, so those two lengths are at the firehouse, knotted off, tied off, so that they don't get used. They're on the floor underneath the hose rack, because again, we were trying to, uh, get it covered in a warranty, but you can't, that company's no longer in existence, so we're kind of stuck, unfortunately.
What would the warranty be anyway on that?
It's ten years.
It's been ten years.
So, you know, it was, it was, it's in its ninth year now.
That was, yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Brew, you'd asked me about it in the meeting, it was, it was right almost at the end of his life, it's warranty anyway.
Yeah, so that, that's the only good thing is, at least it was at the end of the warranty, not at the beginning, you know, we're saying, oh, we're not, you know, we're, we're not that company, so we're not honoring. And now that works, it kind of turned me the wrong way, you would think that if you buy something and there's a warranty, it continues, but I don't know, I guess there's outs with everything. Um, ARPA, we're down to the nitty gritty on ARPA, um, EMS is waiting on, uh, some things that were ordered. Uh, fire, we've got, um, just about enough to, uh, purchase a, uh, I'm gonna bring it to the board of selectmen to purchase, uh, an electric, uh, vent saw that both departments are gonna use and see if that's the way to go. Um, Stony Hill has a nice electric fan that seemed decided it's gonna be the way to go with us so that we have the same equipment, uh, with fans, so batteries will be interchangeable, et cetera. Um, same thing with this saw, we're, we're gonna purchase the saw, and it's gonna be, everybody can use it and demo it and try it out, and see if that's something that both departments wanna get and have the same exact saw.
Vendors don't have any, uh, loaners to use for a demo, we have to have to purchase a demo?
We, we've done a lot of research actually on it, um, and, uh, they don't have a demo on there.
That's a good question.
No, I wish they did, because we already have it here, using it.
That's like a twelve inch saw, you know, we're sorry, twelve inch saw.
Uh, the blade is actually a fourteen, fourteen, fourteen.
Was it, was it a case saw or circular saw?
It's a cir- circular, circular saw, yeah.
And the, the plus part is that, you know, it sucks, it's small, it doesn't.
It's not gonna choke out.
It's, you know, it's just a benefit.
Yeah. And it's, uh, and we already have the blades, so we don't have to get additional blades with it either.
They work on the DeWalt batteries and stuff, so you're not, you're not changing, with a new style battery, you charge it.
And the. Yeah, and the battery is out there, I mean, the DeWalt battery isn't cheap, but it's nowhere near with some of these other manufacturers, with these batteries, they put in these saws and fans and things, uh, it's extremely expensive, that's another reason why we're switching to, uh, the, the, uh, fan that Stony Hill has, because we got one fan several years ago, and, um, nobody really thought about the cost of the batteries, there's four batteries, I've already had to replace two, and it was like over a thousand dollars for two batteries, so I'd rather, you know, get something that the batteries are a little cheaper and a little bit more readily accessible to get, you know, DeWalt is, you know, pretty much going anywhere you get batteries, right? You know, so. That's where we're at, um, you know, like I said, the ARP is just about spent down. Hopefully maybe we can get a little bit more. And, you know, we can continue to look at it, but, you know, gear has gotten extremely expensive. Uh, the fire service has morphed throughout COVID into not one raise per year where they go up in price, but two now, they do mid-year and they do the end of the year. So, like, all of our stuff that we're estimating now in the budget, I'm telling them all, I'm sure they could do the same thing, put the increase in that it's gonna be in there in July, because you know, this is a budget that starts in July, the new budget, so you need the increase in there. If they go to the top of the increase, it'll be there, if they go a little bit lower, great, there'll be a little bit of extra money, you know, so you just, you just don't know. And there's just a couple of things I'm waiting on, so that's great on Tuesday and not, uh, Wednesday.
Well, being new to the commission now, ARPA, how much money did you get?
Uh, we had a hundred fifty thousand for departments split in half, seventy five thousand for EMS, seventy five thousand for fire, and, uh, we've made out very well with EMS at, at Bethel, I think Stony Hill, chief Baker said the same thing, but I'll tell you, and I bet chief Baker would say the same thing too and agree with me, we could use more for fire. Like I said, gear is phenomenally expensive, um, and with two sets for everybody, it's, you know, it's a big, it's a big expense. Once we get the two sets with everybody, where you have a ten year lifespan on it, you're spreading out a little bit, it'll be way more easier to manage. But, you know, we have more money, I can go out and buy X amount right away again, we can keep going. You know, we just had four more, four more young men just get certified as, you know, they're gonna be certified as fire watch, I think Stony Hill's got some coming up too, also, right? Four or five, so, I mean, you're gonna have to buy them gear, and it's not one set, it's gonna be two sets. So, they have five, it's ten, I have four, it's, it's eight. And, uh, you know, it gets expensive, but we gotta protect them the right way. That's it, unless you guys have any questions?
Any questions for the chief?
Nope.
Motion to accept the chief's report?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carry. Next item on the agenda is discussion of Paratek's, Paratek's struts for Stony Hill Fire Department. You, uh, wanna talk about that, chief?
Sure, um. The Bethel Fire Department's been using Paratek's struts for quite some time, uh, up in Stony Hill, we were using the rescue jacks, so right there, we are adding that element of cross-training on two different sets of equipment, when the two departments are mutually responding to any, um, all that requires stabilization, that's what the Paratek's struts are for, it's not for your standard, um, uh, minor accident, it's not for, um, technically even a, uh, education where you're basically still on, on your wheels, it's when the car's on its side, down in embankment, on its roof, to actually stabilize the, the vehicle um, from, uh, rolling over again, or, uh, just moving while you're trying to get, uh, the patient out, so that's what these long, uh, struts are for. Um, each one has its advantages, um, the Paratek's struts are much lighter, easier to, uh, to work with, there's a little bit more of a, uh, lifting capacity with the rescue jacks, but, um, we felt that it was time to try and, uh, have the same equipment, so that regardless of who gets on scene first and what members show up on which truck, they would be able to grab that equipment, be familiar with that equipment, and, and get it deployed, uh, as quick as possible to, uh, to get the person, uh, safe and, and, uh, in EMS care. Um, so what I did was, I put in the budget, the very basic, the smallest package that they have that would work first, they call it their highway package. Um, so it has the basic, uh, elements that you could use to, uh, stabilize in the, um, capital non-recurring budget, I can discuss as well, I submitted that at the beginning of, of December, there is the components, um, if this wasn't approved, um, because this was in the, um, capital from the beginning of the year. If it wasn't approved, I was gonna put it in again, with the additional components that we'd like to have from, uh, Paratek, for, it would have been about thirty five thousand, but, um, if this gets approved, that, that would, that can, can down from the thirty five. But, um, this, I gave you another sheet that itemizes what's in that package for the, uh, for the, uh, highway kit.
Yeah, it says, highway kit is eighty six, ninety six, thirty, and then, and then you have some accessories to go with it.
There was a couple of additional accessories that they said, uh, would help to, uh, to manage that.
So, so you're, I'm a little confused.
So.
So, is this money already in your capital?
That was requested in January of twenty twenty three, in the twenty three, twenty four capital non-recurring.
But the finance board has yet to approve that expenditure?
Correct, well, they, yeah, they approved the balloon amount that was requested, and now you have to go back and ask for the individual one or the individual.
So, so you would be looking for a motion to, to recommend to the selectmen and the board of finance to expend?
Right.
Spend eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty eight dollars and twenty cents added to your capital?
Out of the capital that I had requested, correct.
I could say, I fully support this, Bethel and Stony Hill are doing this together, so we're building a set downtown and a set in Stony Hill that work together. So we will have a full set throughout the town, but we can get going before anybody else comes into houses.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to recommend to the board of selectmen and the board of finance an expenditure of eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty eight dollars and twenty cents out of Stony Hill's capital request to purchase the Paratek's stretch system as.
Thank you. Yeah, second that, second that move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Thank you.
So what do you do with the old jacks?
Because they do have a higher lifting for an acuity, so.
This is basically adding to that all. That's basically carpeted.
It gets a little confusing, Dan, because in, in the ordinance that describes it, we, every, everything we do has to go to the board of select, even though this is really something that goes to the board of finance, we have to recommend it to the board of selectmen for them to recommend it to the board of finance.
And that's, and that's really how all of them work.
Yeah, okay.
The board, everything, everything actually starts in board stuff.
Okay, now, so you have a.
By the way, um, Mr. Chairman, I feel a lot of, but I am going to go to another meeting, um, in, in the charter, there's an opportunity to actually physically, or as I say, formally appoint two executive members to the board, and they're non-voting members, but we're supposed to have one member from each fire department as executive members, who are supposed to sit here on the board. Um, as an executive member, they get full ranks to participate, they just can't vote. So.
And what, and vote?
They cannot vote.
No.
They cannot vote, as executive, yeah, your situation is different.
Yeah. But we had, I believe, Chris and, and John.
I, I thought that as chiefs, they were just, they was, they were.
So it can be anybody from your department as an executive member, you get one each, you guys can choose who that is, it's no more than a four year term, and then they have to be reported. So it'd be yourselves, or it can be somebody from your department, like you're not around, because as chief, you're gonna be here and be told, you know, chiming in anyway. But if you have somebody in your department, you wanna be as part of this body, you can do that as well. So I just wanna make sure you have to do that, because there were a lot of, uh, executive members allowed by the charter that are appointed, so I wanna make sure you do that.
They, they did come before, it's one time, and they asked to have the second person in case they're not here.
Right.
And, and. And and we said that would, we would have to change the ordinance to add that other person to it.
Well, actually, you don't need to make them an ex officio member. Remember, an ex officio member, it's kind of a cool deal. You have all the rights of being a board member, but not the obligation necessarily. They don't have to come every meeting, not allowed to vote. But they can participate in executive session, they can be part of the board in discussion, as well as a recognized good chair. So I'll let you guys kinda.
Can they or can they not speak in our stead?
Well, they can speak.
Cause that's what, that's what I brought up that Rich is alluding to, is I said, the problem is if myself or John aren't here. There was nothing really written in there that said.
Yeah.
We had somebody else that we could appoint in our stead. At the beginning of the the year that that the board would know if we're not here.
Right.
So and so is here to speak for Bethel Fire, so and so is here to speak for Stony Hill Fire.
So so each fire department, it's one ex officio member on the board. And when the board was constituted.
Right.
I don't know why it wasn't filled that way.
I don't know.
Yeah.
But that that would serve your purpose.
And they speak for us.
They they are here on the board and they can speak, they just don't get to vote. But they're fully part of the discussion.
We can't vote any.
Yeah, and you can't vote either, but but anyways, it's it's kind of important, you know, you have that option, it's.
What what it says on the, I'll read it. It's the fire departments will be represented on the commission. By the appointment of one ex officio member for each individual fire department. Ex officio members shall serve only in an advisory capacity and shall not be entitled to vote on issue.
Yeah, yes. So basically, he said as an advisory member, they're speaking on your behalf.
Yes.
Right.
So it's kind of what you gentlemen have been asking for, that's already in the constitution or under the ordinance.
Maybe now between now and.
What was in the past, we, each respective chief was the ex officio member.
Correct.
And that's okay, if they, if that's, but they should be like formally appointed by the board of selectmen as the ex officio member of the board. Because they do have rights as a member. So I'll let you guys handle it. My my advice, just my advice would be pick somebody from the department, pick a training captain, pick a vice. Deputy chief, somebody, because then you kind of get both opportunities. If you're not here, then they could be.
That's my concern is if I'm not here or John's not here and we're the we're the ones sitting there, then there's nobody to speak for. For each department.
There you go.
That's my concern.
Does it say one is what issue?
It said one of your ex officio.
That's only, in my opinion, it's only the chiefs right now.
Right, that's the way I've interpreted it.
It very clearly says in the ordinance that you can appoint anybody, or we can appoint anybody we want from the department.
Correct, but if we, but if we appoint somebody other than the chief, then that eliminates the chief as as.
No, because you as the chair have the ability to recognize the chief of this conversation, just like you've done tonight. They're not here as ex officio members.
We're here representing Bethel Fire and Stony Hill Fire.
Not, no, they're not. Because, because they're not, they're not appointed to the board, they have a war.
Nope.
An ex officio member would be actually part of this board. And would be, would have every right as a board member to participate in the discussion.
Except voting.
Oh, right now, except voting, so now you you are asking them as the chiefs.
They are the department head of each.
I guess what I'm saying is that you'll make the department head the ex officio, you're kind of missing out on an opportunity. But it's it's. But I'll I'll give you guys some leeway on that, like.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to add to the agenda, consideration of ex officio members for each department.
Do you do you wanna do that now? So. You guys have some.
I have the, yeah, I have to go back.
I'm gonna add your discussion purposes, only.
Of course.
So we can make a recommendation, so. I make a motion to add to the agenda. Discussion of appointment of ex officio members for each. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have a poll right now.
You are, Rich?
Yes.
Motion carries in three in favor.
It's a three to one.
So. Now that that's on the agenda, I will make a motion that each chief comes to their respective special meeting. In the next days with a recommendation for an ex officio member to recommend to the commission for appointment.
Yeah. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three to one. Alright, back to the regular. Alright, alright, review of the fires though. Alright, so I think Rich, Rich was present, Tony was present, myself when they uh, when they did the uh presentation. Doug, you weren't there.
But I've read what Tom.
You did read? There's a lot to digest, a lot to digest there, but.
Six pages?
Well, yeah, he was hundred and six, hundred and eight. Um. Yeah, there's a lot to digest there. But it basically comes down to at the end, there's there's twelve bowls recommendations. If I want to just have any questions concerned.
I'll bring it up right now.
Alright.
Bring it up, so. Town spent twenty five thousand dollars on a survey.
Yep.
And years ago, they did a survey.
Yep.
Right? It all it is, you're you're kicking the can down the road. Yeah, but I'm not trying to be rude here, but the the town of Bethel does not. You you have the information in front of you, but they don't do anything about it. Well, this is starting out with trucks prepared for apparatus replacement. Now, I've been doing this for over forty years and coming before the board of finance for umpteen years. And we always would say, you have to put money aside every year for a truck replacement. Every year.
Every year?
Nothing ever is, it just goes to deaf ears. Then the chiefs come to the board of finance and they come up and say, okay, now we need a new engine. Now, this engine costs eight hundred thousand dollars or a new ladder costs one point nine million dollars and they go. It's there. It's all, now it's in the study, another study, it's written in there saying. Apparatus has to be replaced. So I wish the board of selectmen, working with the board of finance, does something this year. You can't, you can't keep doing this, not you personally. The town cannot, the town is growing, the town is growing. It's not the little town of Bethel. It was, well, obviously when I grew up, it's changed. But you, things have to change. You can't just keep the same old, same old. It's it's not working now. It's not working. I mean, you're talking. Big money. Big money, just to replace a a truck. And thank God we have volunteers. Thank God we still have people coming out and doing calls. And you see all the expenses of what's happened. So yes, the study was good. But now that you have the paper and you have all the information, the town has to. Uh, react to this, do something, show that there's something moving forward. I I agree with you a hundred percent, Tony. The board of selectmen, two years ago or a year and a half ago. Supported the truck for Stony Hill. It was a demo, it was a good price. The board of selectmen supported it a hundred percent. It died at. The uh board of finance because they said they didn't have enough information. They have the information there now.
It's all there. I think coming out of this, right, we make a, we make a recommendation to the board of selectmen to. Start to abide by the, what's in, if we all vote in that way. Uh, to abide by what's in that plan, start taking action towards addressing those items, right? It's not one truck anymore, it's not two trucks, it's like five, right? You know, there's no dollars for any of them, we just keep aging these trucks and nothing's gonna, nothing's gonna change unless we start a change.
I mean, I was myself, I was kind of disappointed in the study, I mean.
In the study?
Yeah, oh, I only from the standpoint is that we didn't really learn anything that we didn't already know for the most part. We knew we needed to replace trucks, we knew, you know, that we needed fire schools, we knew, you know, areas that we had to approve upon and. We knew which trucks had to be replaced. And so really, we just got like a bunch of fancy charts and, I mean. More detailed information than we got from the original study, but it was basically all the same information, I had. Oh, I mean, yes, we we got us, we got to start.
Backup detail, right? The advantage of it is, it is detailed and it is old news, but. But we we got a document that says this is what has to be done by an outside, it's not, it's not either the chief saying it, it's not us saying it, it's an outside. Consultancy saying, this is what really should be done.
I I don't know that I necessarily agree with uh an apparatus replacement plan of, you know, every fifteen years or twice an apparatus, that's.
Seems a little extreme.
That's that's a little.
Yeah, but they have to be replaced.
There there has to be a plan in place to fund and replace them.
Can I speak?
Funding is the key part.
Yes, chief, go ahead. Okay, so fifteen years, uh Brad, that's predicated on, you know, he's a, he's a career firefighter. So they're probably doing that down there fifteen years. Obviously, here in Bethel, we all understand it's not gonna be typically fifteen years. We know. But it can't be twenty five or thirty years. And if it fifteen years, you don't want to replace them in fifteen years, then there should be, and I've been saying this. Since day one of me standing in these rooms down here as chief of Bepel Fire Department. There should be a refurbishment slash replacement program. Squad five is a perfect example. It's in its ninth year right now. If we want to keep that. At thirteen, fourteen years, we should be sending that out for a refurb. Now, there's all different stages of refurb. The trucks are pretty good shape.
Ladder brackets are branded, right?
You know, I mean, you know, that's funny and it's not. It's happened in both departments, it's happened, and I'm glad that nothing, there was no other damage to the truck after. So it was, it was a blessing. They did their job, the way they're installed, that's what they're supposed to do, they're supposed to break, and they did. They broke. The guy fell terrible. He went out there, retrained and it's good to go, you know? Um, but, I mean, really, if if we want to keep that longer than the fifteen years. We should be looking at that in year thirteen or fourteen of going out the door. And it can be local, we got a couple of places right here local that are within thirty, forty minutes pier of Bethel. That can do a refurb. At least two places that I know of, there may be one. Okay, and that lengthens the, that truck by probably another ten years at least. Where it then is a twenty five year old truck that, at, you know, twenty two, twenty three years, you're planning to replace it at twenty five now and it goes out the door. But, I mean, that's what we should be looking at. The other thing is, and I, and we're all taxpayers in this room, but you know what? This belief by certain people that we have to have all the money in hand before we buy a piece of fire apparatus. I'm sorry, we're beyond that. We got seven pieces now to replace between the two departments. There's gonna need to be a bond issue, whether people want to hear it or not. This board, the board of selectmen, the board of finance are gonna have to stand up in front, everybody. I'll support you and say, look, we gotta do a bond issue for this many pieces of apparatus. The rest of it, we're putting aside this much money per year on agreement, so we're gonna build up a nest egg and be able to replace the rest of them that way, but. You can't, you can't like. Commissioner Ravino said, kick the can down the road, because that's what's happening right now. I can't believe there's been no action yet on where are we getting the money, what are we doing? The average bill time right now for fire apparatus because of COVID is two and a half to three years. The average bill, two and a half to three years, Joe. If you order a ladder truck today for Stony Hill or for Bethel, you got two and a half to three years to plan out how you're paying for it. Because it's not like a car where you gotta put money down, you're paying for it on upon delivery once we inspect it. And say to the town of Bethel, yes, it's what we ordered, yes, it's working properly, yes. We agreed to put our 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 signature on the piece of paper and accept it on behalf of the town of Bethel. Then we have to hand them a check. So. You have plenty of time. You could order two today and have two and a half to three years to come up with the money. Even if you decided that at the end, you're gonna do a bond issue on those two, because. Within these two and a half to three years, you've been putting two hundred or two fifty aside for the next one you're gonna replace. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, from my perspective. I think we can all agree that the top priority that we can, that we got gotten out of this study is to acquire two ladder trucks. One for each department. That would be the top priority out of the twelve goals.
I think so.
I think we're all in agreement that that would. So with that being said, I I think what we need to do is either. We need to take our time to prioritize the other twelve goals. And it's, cause I mean, some of those other twelve goals are gonna. Incurse them pretty significant expenses.
You're absolutely correct, Mr.
You know, we can't, we can't do it obviously all at once. I mean, I don't think we can buy two ladder trucks at once, but. We can recommend it, but. Right. I mean. At this point, with Stony Hill not having a ladder truck at all and 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 the age of Bethel's ladder truck, I mean, I I think. I would lean towards recommending acquiring a ladder truck for Stony Hill first and then and then. Twelve months later, you know, getting a ladder truck underway for Bethels, you know. Within the next, you know, four years, you know, I would like to see two new ladder trucks at this town.
Well, see, you know, it it's really not up us us for the financing, that's the board of uh finance. But we can make the recommendations to get the two trucks ordered too.
Right, but my my point is I don't want to order two at the same time, because then we're gonna have to replace two at the same time.
I would.
Well, it depends on, you know, Mr. Chairman, that depends on delivery schedule and that depends on, what are you gonna do with them? Because. Quite frankly, a ladder truck, you probably are gonna refurb each of them once, you would think, right? Because of the, because of the cost.
Yep.
You're gonna refurb them each once. So you you stagger the refurbs accordingly and then you're there. As as Commissioner Ravino just said, you order them both and then you stagger the refurbs for them. And then now you've got that space. That's the thing.
Rich, can you s- can you speak at all to the finances that are available in the in the near term?
There's nothing in the midterm, it it's this coming budget, you know, maybe we can have Brad come to our next meeting and. Talk about possible finances, but it's really up to the board of finance.
No, I understand.
You know, if we make the recommendation to the board of selectmen that we think that we should go out and get the two trucks right away. Or one truck or or stagger them. Our recommendation to the board of selectmen and then the board of selectmen. And I would support going to the board of finance again and fighting for for the trucks. You know, that if if you have to bond them or whatever you have to do, you take it up, there's some extra money in the general fund, they could. Pay probably for one truck out of the general fund.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah.
It's up to that, we, the us and the board of selectmen have nothing to do how they would finance.
I understand, yeah, I mean, just, the last time I spoke, you know, this came up and I was speaking to former selectman Nickerbacher, he indicated that there was. Money already set aside to to acquire the ladder truck for Stony Hill. The one, the million dollars that was.
That's out of the the uh reserves.
I thought that was supposed to come out of Arpa Fund. Is there any money left in Arpa Fund?
There's approximately a million three less than there. But it, but it it's been allocated for other things too. Has been spent yet. So it would be my recommendation, based on the information that we got from the chiefs now. But I've, I know this myself. The lit, the amount of time it takes to order the truck, get the truck, we're talking years. Right, so say you order one for Stony. Now it costs whatever. Now you wanna order another one for Bethel, right? So now you're talking more money than what you spent on the first ladder truck, taking another three years.
Yeah.
But do it, both, put them both in at the same time.
The other thing you need to realize is, especially with the ladder truck, that's the most expensive piece you're gonna buy.
Oh, yeah, ever, yeah, ever.
And if you wait, order one or the other, I don't care, you wait on the other one, you're gonna spend more money on that. Just to explain about. Have you six months now, we're going up in price.
You you got a motion, chief?
Yeah, if you don't, can I say it?
Go ahead.
So I I agree a hundred percent. Um, but I think between the two fire chiefs and the fire commission, you have to be very creative. You have to look at stock units that are available now. You have to get on list with vendors for order cancellations. Fire departments are canceling orders, but they're taking. You gotta look at that. You might, I mean, used fire trucks are an empty subject, but you may wanna look at getting a used ladder truck. To start.
Cause you don't know what happened to that truck.
I know, but I'm just saying, between the fire departments, the fire chiefs, you gotta get very creative with this because, like we said.
That's a good point.
Three years down the road, that's a long way away.
Long way away.
And, you know, getting a stock, you know, maybe not getting every.
And, you know, getting a stock, you know, maybe not getting every. Piece of equipment that you want on there and getting a stock unit, you know, that's still gonna fit the need.
You can always add stuff after.
So you gotta kind of be a little creative and uh. My, so my concern is starting with, let's get two ladder trucks. I wanna make sure the rest of the package is considered, right? Like we, we head down this path and oh, we're gonna get two ladder trucks in two and a half years. We'll have those trucks. We can't forget about the other things on there that need to get replaced, like. And I, and I know this all goes, right? You go to the board of finance, oh, we just gave you three million dollars for, for trucks. You're not getting any trucks, right? It's. It's a bigger thing than just the two trucks. I agree that we gotta do something. We gotta start with something. We gotta get moving. But I wanna make sure as we, whatever we present and, and as we recommend, it's, it's a whole package that we continue this. Process of being able to replace stuff, not doing it three years from now, looking for more money and then. Start building the money up so that there is a, there's a path to do this.
And I, I think we should lay out a schedule, looking at all the trucks that need to be replaced or refurbished. And, but for us to look at and for us to make the recommendation for the board of selectmen. To go to the board of finance, as Doug's saying, you don't wanna get caught short, we all. Because they'll say that, well, we just gave you three million dollars. We're not spending anymore.
We need to come up with a recommendation, a dollar amount for the board of finance to set aside every year. His earmark specifically for apparatus. But in the meantime, we need to come up with a recommendation to. Acquire two ladder trucks, like sooner than on the.
And may, and maybe, maybe part of that, part of that equation is go to the board of finances, hear the needs. How can we, how can you help us meet these needs, right? And say, two ladder trucks right away. There's this, this. And maybe get some guidance rather than us saying, we wanna do, we wanna do it this way. Let's maybe ask them to tell us how they wanna see it.
The key thing you gotta remember too is, the engines are gonna change. And that's why I've pushed so hard to replace the one downtown, because if we don't get it before they change the engines. Once they change the engine, they have to re-engineer the truck to fit the new engine in it. And then on top of that. We, the town of Bethel is gonna have to spend money in the fire station. To actually preheat the exhaust on the rig. So the more we do now refurb in rigs and buying new now, where you get in under the wire while they're still building the engines. That we can get now, not the new engine that EPA wants you to use. The more money you're gonna save in the long run for the taxpayer. Because you're gonna have to install those in every bay in each firehouse eventually. So if you buy yourself. You know, twenty years now, twenty-five years now with, with two ladder trucks, you've done something. It's money you're not having to spend now.
Does the board of finance have that report?
Well, some of the, there was some of the. Uh, Tony, there was, there was a couple of the board of members at that. The chair was there.
Well, I mean, I, I, alright, so going back to our number one goal was to get two ladder trucks. I, I think that's, that has to be our priority recommendation somehow is, what, what are we gonna recommend to the board of selectmen about two ladder trucks?
Ordered onto the board of finance.
In addition, a plan of replacement for the remaining apparatus.
Alright, somebody wanna make a motion? The American comprehended right now?
I would like to make a motion. The fire commission recommends to the board of select. To go to the board of finance in pursuit of the. Uh, purchase of two ladder trucks, one for Stony Hill, one for Bethel. And in addition, have them acknowledge their, uh, uh, forward-looking replacement plan for the balance of the apparatus. As described in, how can we name, what's the name of the report?
Consultants report.
Consultant report.
Urgency Services Consulting International.
You can also invite Brad to one of your meetings. I mean, if you're having a special meeting, let's say when you're going to talk about my budget. Invite Brad in your meeting of the commission and talk to him before, after. My session and you can discuss some uh, finance uh, options of one truck, two trucks.
I don't think in a special meeting you're allowed to do anything other than.
Well, it has to be on the agenda, has to be. So, I mean, we could add that.
Just knowing that option out there.
Meantime, between now and these meetings, will we start making some phone calls? On fire medic, wherever we even deal with.
I've done it. I've done that. I had one ready, ready to go on. I had one ready to, I had one ready to go on the line. I relayed the information. It was two point two million dollars because a company refused to take it because for them it was gonna be two point five. And I was told we had to wait for the report to come out before we discussed anything. I said, well, by then it'll be gone. So now it's gone. It was not a demo. It wasn't even put together yet, but the engineering and everything else have been done for two years. So if it was agreed upon and I signed the paper that said we're taking it. When it went on the line, it was twelve months from the time it went on the line, the delivery.
Is there a motion?
I've done a lot of, done a lot of research.
Can you read the motion back?
Recommend to the board of selectmen and then forward to the board of finance to purchase two ladder trucks, one for each department. And a forward replacement plan as described in the ESCI.
Second on that motion?
I second that motion.
All in favor? Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Any other discussion on the fire study this evening?
I was surprised you didn't call for a new firehouse in the middle of town.
We do the best we can. It's almost sixty years old.
No, I'm just surprised, like. They made some, yes, they made some little tweaks to the existing buildings, but it didn't even seem like they really considered. Would a central department be better?
Now, that's a long run out to Stony Hill.
They talked about that, that.
I mean, I think we need to have a lot more discussion on this study and, and specifically the twelve goals mentioned at the end. Unless anybody else has anything on it tonight.
And I think it says in, you know, when you read the actual study, it talks about, you know, that replacement plan they put in there. Again, that's just, you know. Kind of an example or a recommendation, but they talk about using a, a point system to. Based on the age of the apparatus, the mileage and all those things to kind of get a point rating system to kind of tweak your replacement plan as well. So that's something I think the fire department's gonna work on and do with.
If you have set dates, you at least know that you better have money come that date. And when you sell that apparatus, you're going to get some money for it and then depending on its age and. Um, and its uh, condition, that's what's going to determine the um, resale value, right? So we don't have this problem where we just sold a, a forty-year-old truck for fifteen hundred dollars. Ropil sold the truck that was, you know, yeah, rented a lot, uh, newer, but they got over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, but that was, that was. Five, but it was what? Ten, ten or fifteen years old. Yeah, that's why.
We have to have a finite data and say, all right, we know we have to spend that money, but now at least we're gonna recoup some of that. By selling it before it's worthless.
Alright, well, I, I think Doug encompassed that in his motion by establishing a forward plan for the rest of the maybe apparatus.
Rescue two is twenty-five years old now.
Alright, so what a motion to accept the review of the post fire study for this evening? All those in favor? Opposed. Alright, considerate, consideration, consider, boy, consideration. Recommendation to fill the vacancy on the commission, uh, the vacancy created by uh, DJ Brown. I personally was gonna recommend Mark White, past chief of the Dodging Town Fire Department. You know, chief from an outside agency and, and has a different perspective on things, you know, how they work outside the town of Bethel. Newtown also has a, a fire commission, so he has a lot of knowledge on how other fire commissions work and. What they do, he was, he was very instrumental in doing some of the uh. Apparatus replacement plans in Newtown and uh, recruitment and retention plans for the town. Just, I think he's a wealth of knowledge and he, he would benefit the commission, so he, he would be my recommendation to the board of selectmen to fill the vacancy. Will entertain any other recommendations?
I give it a name to um. Dan, um, his name is Paul Parati. He's a uh. Yeah, he's a Danbury firefighter. Um, the only reason why he wasn't really um, available for. Um, questioning this week is because he's actually taken lieutenant's test at Danbury Fire for a promotion. He took the written on Monday and he's got his oral boards, I believe, on Thursday. So it's after that he would be available, but obviously he's been a um. A, a long-term uh, resident of Bethel. Um, he also. Has lived in the area all his life. He's been um, he's lived in Danbury. He's been a, a volunteer firefighter for about, uh, well. In the fire service for over thirty years and he started his career uh, in the volunteer ranks as well in um.
He was actually in the original pool for the commission when we first created it.
Yeah, he was.
I'm sorry, what was the name again?
Paul Parati.
And I believe there's a party affiliation.
Lives over by me. Nice guy.
DJ was an independent?
I think DJ was Democrat. I believe DJ was Democrat. Oh, DJ is independent too? I am, I am as well.
What was Peter?
Who said?
Is it DJ spot, DJ spot or Peter spot?
But you're, you're replacing a uh, pointed one year term.
Alright, so hearing no other recommendations, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the board of selectmen, the following names to fill the vacancy. Through that consideration, Paul Parati and Mark White. All those in favor? Opposed. So carry. Alright, I believe uh, Mr. Straight had something.
I'd like to add to the agenda discussion of uh, PFAS in the turnout gear.
All in favor of adding PFAS in the turnout gear?
We need a second.
All those in favor? So carry.
Uh, there's an article in the Danbury News Times about the uh, chief though and um. In Danbury, there was a, a meeting that he had with some of the legislators. Uh, and the issue about PFAS in the turnout gear. Um, we're talking about new, buying new gear this coming year. Is there any gear that doesn't have PFAS in it?
Most of what you wear has PFAS in it.
Yeah, well, I, I'm just, I'm just asking.
No, I'm saying it's, it's, it's. That's the thing is, is they fake these certain things and say, oh, this, but no, it's in everything. So it's something that, that's gonna have to be dealt with. It is what it is.
Or, I mean, have you guys heard of anything?
There, there is nothing, because part of the standard in that article talked about the N F P standards. Has a certain. You limit the amount of times you wear your turnout gear, right? That's the second set of turnout gear is important because while it's wet, you don't wanna be wearing it. Absorbing it into you.
So, are, are departments all following the? Or recall for it?
Another reason like Tommy said, why you need two sets of gear.
And there's a state law that just recently passed for the cancer legislation. Really, the career union, you, the unit, uniform firefighter union pushed very hard for is that it's, it's a presumptive. Cancer, it's presumptive workers' comp now. So it's. And guaranteed that, you know, if you get a certain type of cancer, if you, as a firefighter, it's presumed you got it. From your duties and includes volunteer firefighters, includes fire marshals, fire inspectors. And now the towns have to put in ten dollars per firefighter. To the state every year, the fund this. But there's certain caveats. You have to be an interior certified firefighter. For at least five years. You have to have a physical every year that shows. That you don't have any type of cancers and you have to be a non-smoker for fifteen years. So it really limits.
Well, that's good.
You know, in fifty members, it's, it's, the pool is much smaller.
Is there a specific, there is a specific physical that's required to.
It didn't really say in there. It just says a, an annual physical exam.
So, that's interesting.
So the towns are funding this because they think it's going to obviously. Cause issues with like kerma fought it because it wasn't gonna be a big workers' comp issue with, with the possible workers now.
I, I just wanted to bring it before the commission, so we're aware of it. You know, it's, the PFAS is everywhere on, you know, we deal with it on the. Open utility commissions, so.
Nothing else, so entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed. So carry.